Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting to order. May I have the roll call, please?
Here.
Here.
Here. Here. I'd like everyone to please stand and join us up here in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I ask the council's approval of the minutes of the special city council work session of January 14th, 2014, the special city council work session of January 14th, 2014, the regular city council meeting of January 14th, 2014, and the special city council meeting of January 18th, 2014.
Madam -- I have a correction.
Yep.
The correction, in terms of the designating mayor pro tem, it says that I was the one that presented that report, and I did not. I think that was you.
Yeah, that was the mayor.
So if you could change that.
Okay. With the catch, I didn't catch that.
With that correction, I'll move all of the amendments, or all of the minutes.
With the amendment.
Yep, that sounds good.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we have the council agenda, excuse me, council discussion, hats off to hometown hits, and I know council member Sandal has something?
I do. Thank you, your honor. This is the new Richfield resident guide, and if we can get it on the screen so people can see all of it, that would be nice. This was given to the city council in our recent packets. It's a very, very nice brochure. Tells all about Richfield as the community, gives you useful information. It's now being given out to anybody that moves into Richfield who comes into Homestead. They're provided with a copy, and I'll show you. I'll flip through a few pages in just a minute. But also, if you want local information about the city, all of the information in this brochure is also on the city website. So you don't even have to go pick up a copy. You can just look for it on the city site. And I'll just flip through and show you some of the neat things that are in it. So we have some of the useful information about what is the number to call for the city hall, for public works, public safety. All of the main numbers are there. It also gives you information about what are the rules for living in Richfield. Can you put a for-sale sign in your car? Where can RVs be parked? Do your pets need a license? All of that information is provided on the city website and also in the brochure. Also tells you what kinds of city services and programs are available in the community, what are the hours for motor vehicle licensing, public works, all of the useful information that as a city resident you may need to wanna to find out. Tells you where the road, the city wards are, so you might know where you need to vote. Tells you about each of the amenities in the city, the ice arena, the pool, Wood Lake Nature Center, and then it locates where all the parks are. And this one gives you what are the features in each of the various parks in the community. So it's a really, really useful brochure, very useful information, and as I was told, all of the information is also online on the city website. So if you have questions about the city, you now have a place to go and check it out. And thank you, staff, for such a nice brochure. We appreciate that.
Absolutely. Well done.
Council member Garcia?
Okay, I've got two things. Number one is Tuesday, the 4th, is our precinct caucus night. So, and most of those are open at 6:30, and they start at 7:00, and I would encourage everyone to go. That way you can talk about local issues, state issues, federal issues, and make your, you know, your voice count by attending your precinct caucus. The other thing is, Sunday night, we lost a good friend, Matthew Little. Matt Little was a good guy. He was very instrumental in almost anything that had to do with civil rights. He was born in Washington, DC. He led the Minnesota delegation in the March on Washington in 1963. He was instrumental in terms of fair housing, school desegregation, you name it. He was, and the reason that I'm talking about him is because Matt Little was one of us. He was a Richfield guy, and he lived here for many, many years. He was a guy that, you know, he and I would often, when I first moved here, of the people of color, there were really not very many. So he and I bonded, and we were just always kind of a little duo of the DFL party. We had a great time together. The other thing is that he was one of Richfield's Citizen of the Year, the Mary and Jean Jacobson Citizen of the Year Award. He was also, he loved to play, too. He was a great tennis player, and he played with the senior league. He played with Emily Day, was one of his partners, and I guess they, you know, were very, very good and won a number of championships. So he was, he was the kind of guy that people like me would look to as a mentor, because he was not like a radical out there making things happen, getting his voice heard. He was a very quiet, gentle giant that was, he believed in being very conciliatory. And I really think that we will miss him. He was a good friend to everyone, and I just wanted to pay tribute to our former Richfield resident, good and good neighbor, Matthew Little. Thank you.
Council member?
And I will second that. Very well done, Edwina. He was a friend of my dad as well as myself, and since he was involved with post office things years ago. When I first moved back to Richfield, I was his associate chair, and he was chair of the local parties. So we had lots of time together.
Absolutely.
He did great things for the community, good resident, well deserving of all the tributes he's been receiving.
Absolutely.
Council member?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I've got two things. For everybody that's looking for something to do Saturday, February 1st, we have the Taflake Ice Fishing Bowl. Thought I'd remind everybody, you know, ice is really thick enough now. It's a free family event, and it says, hey, kids, join us for free ice fishing. Main event, introducing families to Minnesota's most popular outdoor activities. No prior experience or ice fishing gear is needed. Fishing tips will be shared, and a special prize will be awarded to a few lucky anglers. Warm beverages and refreshments are provided. No pre-registration is needed, just show up. And it's sponsored by Home Depot. Again, that's Saturday, February 1st, 10 to 1, at our famous Taflick Fishing Hole.
You can flash freeze your fish, then.
I'm hoping it's not that bad. Your beverages won't get warm, we know.
Very good, mayor.
The other item I have is, we attended a MAC NOISE meeting, and one thing that's important to the citizens of Richfield is they're gonna be closing out the Phase 3 program for Richfield and for rest of them. There was 1,053 people that they have identified that haven't gone with the NOISE program yet. So this is their last chance to do it, and out of that, there's 210 of them in Richfield. We are gonna get the addresses, and I know staff was talking about getting them on board to get this done. A final letter, which I have a draft copy of, but they can go on MACNOISE.com and find more about it. But February 7th, they will be sending the final letter out, the final notice, to the residents, and they're eligible from anywhere from $3,124 to $3,250 per household for noise mitigation, but it has to be approved materials. Now, here's the catch, they told us. If you're really looking for windows, because they're special windows, it takes you four to 12 weeks to get those windows, depending on the order. So you're already maybe three months down. Then you gotta get the contractor, which the contractors now, they need 60 to 70 days' notice that they're gonna put these windows in, and then you gotta have everything done by July 31st.
Wow.
So we're under the gun, if you're looking at doing this. Tomorrow would be a good day to start. So you need all your receipts and everything done. After the 31st of July, they lose their eligibility. In other words, you can't go back to MAC and say, I want my windows done, I want this done, you know, why didn't you tell me? So if you're listening out there and you're interested, you can go to the MAC website at MACNOISE.com. There'll be a letter coming to your door. We'll probably have more information on our website that we can post once the letter is done. So I wanted to make sure everybody knows about that, so we don't let anybody slide by. Also, if you're a renter in that house and hasn't been done, let the landlord know, because I'm not sure where they're gonna send that mail to. So if you know people that are renters in the house, and maybe they got an absentee landlord that's out of state or whatever, let them know so we can get the right address to let them know to get in and get it done. It's to their benefit. So, that's all I have.
It's to staff, or are we gonna, like, make phone calls and do some pretty big outreach? I would hope to get this done, and I'm concerned that just what you said is the case. Maybe we have a foreclosure, we have some houses for sale, and people just aren't interested, but we don't want to miss that opportunity.
Certainly, Madam Mayor, members of the council. What we've done in the past is, after the MAC has sent out, they've sent out several notices over the course of the whole mitigation program during the different phases, and we've tried to follow up then with a letter from the city just indicating to whomever received the letter from the MAC, the city supports this program. We strongly recommend that you participate. If you have any questions, you can certainly call staff, as well as someone from the MAC. The other thing we've done previously, and will probably try to do it again in this case, is have a letter also in Spanish, because I think there are several homeowners that are maybe non-English speaking, most likely Spanish speaking, and want to make sure that they are understanding of the opportunity here. So I think that might be critical as well. It's been frustrating, of course, when this mitigation program, right in the heart of it, all the foreclosures happen.
Yes.
And banks just never responded to it. But we're gonna do our due diligence to try to get to as many people, as homeowners as possible.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Well, I just have one item, because my council always covers all the great things that are going around so well. I don't have to usually have my list. Thank you for doing such a great job. I serve on a MAC council housing task force to redo the policy of housing at the MAC council level. At this point, we are going through the Fair Housing Equity Assessment draft that is being redone, and I've already brought this to the HRA meeting, and I brought copies for you. It's a nice report. And I know that Doris Rubenstein got hers, and has already read hers and made some comments back to me and sent, and I am passing them on. It's up to you if you want to make comments or not. I already gave one to Sue. You wanna pass that to Tom, and I have one for Patty. He's not here. I appreciate comments or concerns about this. Again, I'm gonna wait for a couple of slides. I want to show you some slides, because there's some specific concerns about some of the poverty and the segregation even in our community, and I just want to bring that to our attention, and so that the council knows this, because it's really rather timely that, first of all, we're getting this and that I serve on this, because we're working on moving into the policy part of our own housing and redevelopment. And it'll be interesting to see how this progresses alongside the council, the MAC council. I'm certainly making comments to them about, you know, some of the things and the issues and the challenges that we see as a city, too, as we try to implement all types of housing policy, not just affordable housing. This just happens to be what we're working on right now. There's more to it. So...
And when do you want comments?
You know what? Within the next several weeks. You have several weeks, because I won't be meeting. I just got done with the meeting, just picked this up, and it'll be a month before I meet again.
Okay.
But I'm passing those along as I get them. So, and it always helps if I have some comments. I'm sure that staff reviews this stuff, too, and they've got copies, and they're sending comments back, too, as most cities are. So it's been very interesting. I've learned an awful lot, and I've heard a lot of different perspectives. So it'll be interesting to see how things move forward. So that's, that's my one comment to the, and I could use your help if you see anything in there that's missing specifically, that we need to have something around Richfield. So I do appreciate your help. So, that's mine. I ask the council approval of the agenda as it stands.
So, second?
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have the consent calendar. City manager?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion, and once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further city council action on those items will be necessary. Tonight, we have about seven or so items, starting with item eight, which is consideration of the approval of the first reading of a transitory ordinance providing funding for certain capital improvements from the Special Revenue Fund, and scheduling the public hearing and second reading for February 25th, 2014. Item B is consideration of the approval of a cooperative local bike and pedestrian connection agreement as part of the Three Rivers Park District's on-ramps to the regional trail system. Item C is consideration of the approval of the resolutions authorizing a grant application submittal for the state or Minnesota Safe Routes to School Program. Item D is consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing a funding application submittal for the 63rd Street Greenway in the Federal Transportation Alternatives Program. Item E is consideration of the approval of the agreements with the recommended nonprofit organizations to provide social services to the city of Richfield. Item F is consideration of the approval of a resolution supporting the submittal of an application for and acceptance of a grant from the Metropolitan Council Local Housing Incentives Account Grant Program for assistance with the creation of a Housing Incentives Account Grant Program, I'm sorry, assistance with the creation of affordable housing units within the Lindell Garden Development at 6400 Lindell Avenue. And finally, item G is consideration of the approval of a resolution regarding establishing a voluntary advanced resignation notice pilot program for regular full-time licensed officers in the police and fire departments. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Discussion?
Well, I did want to point out an item E. When we're talking about the consideration of the approval of the agreement with recommended nonprofit organizations who provide social services to the city of Richfield, I know that last time when we were talking about whose liaison to what commission and organization, I think it was, I don't remember what it was called, oh, it was called the Richfield Community Human Services Planning Council. And it's really what item E does. And one of the things that I think is really, really important is that we have someone, a citizen or a member of the council, someone who actually knows who the social service agencies serving Richfield are, and has worked with them and knows the players involved. And that's one of the things that I think should be added. And that person can be the liaison, you know, to, and I know, it could be either someone from the council. I think I have more of a human services, social services background. But if not me, maybe someone from the Richfield Community Council, which would be like Camilo DeSantis or Susan Rosenberg, Nancy Rowley, those are folks that have worked in this area. And I would suggest that we add one of those folks or myself to the next round of awards. And I know Ms. Barton has worked on that, and I appreciate your help and being here. How does, while we're talking about that, how do you, how do you work the process? What process are you using?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. The process that we use is to send out a request for proposals. And I, when we get proposals in, I base their qualifications on the criteria that was established initially by the Richfield Community Human Services Planning Council, in addition to some other criteria, including cast performance and things like that.
Okay. Okay. So I'd like that to be, you know, part of next year's plan.
Absolutely. Sure. We can, we can do that. That's easily added.
I'm in agreement with that as well. I think that's actually a good idea.
Good.
It's just another voice or opinion, or somebody to look it over, and it lends some credibility to it, some transparency.
Yeah, I think we talk about transparency all the time, and I, I think we need someone that's actually involved in the actual process.
And I just wanted to mention, too, because I was just, again, just kinda skimming through the consent calendar before we came to the meeting tonight, and I just was looking at all these wonderful projects that we're doing at the parks. You know, I don't think people realize how much money it takes to keep these parks up and running, and we're doing significant projects. We're just doing some major park maintenance projects, the Lincoln Field Internal Loan Repayment. We have community garden relocations, the Taflak Athletic Lighting Improvements. We have Vets Park Play Equipment. We have Wood Lake Nature Center Boardwalk Repair, and the Wood Lake Nature Center Parking Lot, that's in really bad disrepair. And it's a considerable amount of money that we have to keep and to keep our parks up and keep things going nice. And I'm just impressed with how much we do with the money that we have and how much we're able to keep up. And again, that's with our liquor sales, that we do that. And there was an article in the paper about how much that has helped cities and how well that is, Richfield was up there in the rankings, too. And I'm really proud to say that we've already done that. And even with some of the other liquor stores coming in and competing, we're still doing really well. I think the word's out there. If you go over and buy a six-pack, you can go buy a six-pack of beer at one of those discount liquor places, or you can go in Richfield and you can support your parks. You may pay a nickel more or a dime more or something, but we're fairly competitive. And you get a really good deal for that kind of a bargain when you look at the kind of parks we have. So I just wanted to say thanks to staff and kudos. Another good one. I know we continue to fight that battle when they try to take that away from us. Thank you. We have item five, which is council member Garcia.
Did we actually move it? I think--
Oh, did we move it? Oh, I think we, no, we didn't. We did--
We didn't vote on it, I think.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council member Garcia?
Thank you. Item five is a public hearing, second reading and summary publication of an ordinance amendment to Richfield City Code Appendix D, the fee schedule. City staff conducts an annual review of Richfield City Code Appendix D, which establishes certain fees related to building permits and fees, land use application fees, and fire services fees. The intent is to ensure that fees charged for city services reflect actual staff cost incurred in providing these services without being erroneous or excessive. Staff is recommending the following changes. Point 5% reduction in electrical fees for jobs exceeding $55,000. Scaled fees based on project costs for major amendments to plan unit development, conditional use permits, and site plan approvals. Addition of an annual monitoring fee for interim use permits. Addition of language related to replacement of existing communication antennas and minor text amendments to clarify land use application fees. Give the city the ability to recoup additional cost if necessary and correct the code references. And before we open it up, I was gonna ask Mr. Stark, what exactly is the additional, the addition of the annual monitoring fees for interim use permits?
Yes, thank you, council members and mayor. The interim use permit is granted to somebody that says they're gonna do something that's not consistent with the zoning code, and it would just be a for temporary period of time. Oftentimes, when that's granted by the city council, it's for a, let's say, a three-year period or a five-year period, but the city council gives staff a stipulation that we're gonna go ahead and grant this for a five-year period, but staff, we'd like you to check on this every year to see if they're maintaining the conditions that we set forth. And so it's really a small fee to provide staff time for doing that follow-up.
Good. Thank you for that clarification. So this is a public hearing, mayor.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to come forward to speak in this matter?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed.
Okay, so I move that we conduct and clo, well, we already conducted and closed it, and that we approve the attached ordinance amendment to Richfield City Code Appendix D fee schedule, and we approve the attached resolution authorizing summary publication of the ordinance amending Richfield City Code Appendix D fee schedule.
I'll second. Any further discussion? I think it looked very reasonable. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council member Fitz Henry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The item under consideration is a resolution approving the contract with police officers and detectives for LES, Law Enforcement Labor Services Local 123, for the contract period of January 1, 2014, through December 31, 2015. City staff has completed labor negotiations with police officers and detectives of LES, LES Local 123, which is the union. The provisions for the 2014-2015 labor agreement cover all the employees in this union, which consist of 31 positions. The two-year contract provides for a wage adjustment of 2.25% for each year of the top, of the contract. It also includes a salary schedule pay progression adjustment at the top two steps for both police officers and detectives in order to bring their top wages more in line with other similar-sized metro area cities. This was done after a thorough analysis of the metro wage by our staff. The other provisions of the tentative agreement include a $40 per month increase in the city's contribution toward health insurance, and a $7.50 per month increase towards employee single dental coverage. There is a reopen or provision for health insurance in 2015. An increase of 20 cents per hour in 2014 for field officer training pay to $2.65 per hour, with an additional 10 cent increase in 2015, which will bring it to $2.75 per hour. This is the rate of pay is only received if an officer is conducting field training for a new department officer. A $25 increase to the clothing allowance, going from $8.25 to $8.50 per year in 2015. Having said that, I'll go ahead and make the motion, and we can discuss it, that I make the motion that we adopt the resolution approving the provision of the 2014-2015 labor agreement with the police officers and detectives, LES Local 123 bargaining unit, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
I'll second.
And the discussion, I want to thank Pam. This is the second one. Every meeting we're getting, we're getting, and then we got another one come behind, for getting these behind us, because I know it's a pain waiting till March and that and trying to figure out things. So I do congratulate you, and also their union for working with you and getting this resolved quickly.
This is really nice. It's nice to have this. Other comments? Thank you for the hard work on this. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is consideration of a resolution approving an amendment to the 2013-2014 labor agreement with the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 49. City staff has completed labor negotiations with the-- Engineers Local 49. City staff has completed labor negotiations with the Internal Union of Operating Engineers Local 49 Union for the contracted reopeners Article 26 Health Insurance and Article 31 Wages of its 2013-2014 contract, subject to council approval. The union includes public works, workers, water plant operators, water plant mechanics, automotive mechanics, assistant facility operator, and lead workers. There are approximately 38 employees represented in this unit. The tentative agreement on the reopeners provision provides a wage adjustment of 2.25%, which we heard before, effective the first full pay period of January 2014. A $40 per month increase in the city contribution towards health insurance, and an increase in $7.50 per month towards employee single dental coverage. Both the 2.25% wage adjustment for 2014 and the health and dental insurance contributions are the same as provided to non-union staff and to, in approved in 2014 contract with police supervisors. At this time, I will make a motion to adopt the resolution designating a 2.25% salary increase effective the first full pay period of January 2014, and an increase in the city's contribution toward health and dental insurance premiums for the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 49. Second. Any other discussion? Thanks again to staff for this. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Sandel, I believe you have the next item.
Thank you, your honor. The city council interviewed a number of candidates who wanted to be appointed or reappointed to city commissions, and as usual, we had excellent, excellent candidates. Some people have been here many, many years, and other people are brand-new to the community and still want to get involved and serve. And so I would like to move that we appoint the following persons to fill the following terms. On the Advisory Board of Health, Kirsten Johnson for a term expiring, in fact, every single one of these terms expires January 31, 2017, so I'm not going to repeat it over and over. Kelly Johnson to the Arts Commission, Dave Bezecchi to the Civil Service Commission, Teresa Cruz to Community Services Commission, and to the Human Rights Commission, Mark Westergaard and Elizabeth Went, Rick Jabs to the Planning Commission, and Chuck Stanfus to Planning Commission, and three people to Transportation Commission, David Taylor, Jerry Charnitz, and Ted Wiedenbach. So I would like to move all of those persons.
Second. We had some great candidates, didn't we? It was really, really nice, and it's always a joy to have them come in to that. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And if I can, your honor, we always let the world know, including our residents, that we still have more openings available. So we have a great number, a number of people on the Arts Commission could apply and be appointed. We have openings on Community Services, Friendship City Commission, the Human Rights Commission. So any of those commissions, we have online, there will be on the city website. You can find more information about each commission and when they meet. So if you have an interest in serving on any of those commissions, please feel free to submit an application. You can mail one in, you can email one in, and we will be making additional appointments as the weeks go by. We would really like to fill all of our remaining city commission slots. So please think about joining us. And most of the commission members, we have, in fact, all of them. I've never heard one say they didn't enjoy what they did. And they might not know everything there is to know, but they learn quickly, and they always want to be reappointed, because they've really enjoyed their experience, they like what they've learned, they've shared with their neighbors what they've learned. It's a real resource for the community to have Richfield members serving on these commissions.
I know we heard several people saying, you know, "I'm so much more connected to Richfield now, and that's one of the reasons I want to serve on a commission." Isn't that great? It's wonderful. Wonderful. City managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to have Pam talk about something that we're pretty excited about, and something that Pam has worked on, that I'll just let her talk about.
Well, we're going to be rolling out a new online civic engagement platform called Richfield Connect, and we are going to demonstrate it for you at our council goal-setting session on Friday. We've been working, we have contracted with a company called Mind Mixer. They're out of Omaha, and we really like the platform, and we're really excited about offering another way for our residents to provide feedback to us as the council makes decisions as far as community planning, the things you were talking about tonight with the ban shell. There's just so many things going on, and we realize that a lot of people have difficulty coming to an open house, and so, but they want, you know, to provide some feedback. So we are excited to be able to offer this new opportunity, and it will be launched officially February 3. So we're getting ready. We've got a couple topics already lined up, and we'll be talking about that with you again at goal-setting, but want to get the word out to the community, and we're working with Brian Santos on a lot of publicity.
He's good.
Yep, we're doing displays and posters. We'll be talking to Andy from the Sun Current. So we really do want to get the word out, and hopefully you'll assist us in that regards. But I think this will be a great endeavor for 2014.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Pam. All I can say is, you're going to like it. It's really cool. Really, the only other thing I wanted to say, we're, of course, meeting tomorrow morning at 7:30 here with our legislators, and talk about legislative initiatives that we're looking at for 2014, and then again, we're going to have our goal-setting on Friday, starting at 8 o'clock. So busy week.
Yeah, it is. Just a question. What time do you anticipate the legislative meeting with Will and, do we have a...
I would be surprised if it went, I mean, it'll be over by 9 o'clock, I would, I certainly would think.
Okay, thank you.
I saw some pizza pie being delivered to the police department. I wonder if that was meant for us.
Flag them down, huh?
Yes. That's adjourned there.
Claims and payroll.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Seeing no further business, I call this adjourned. You can go see the State of the Union, huh?
That's right.
Thank you. Yep. Good night, everyone. Thank you.